The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Eighteen present.
A quorum being present, we are blessed today to have with us Dr. Troy Nash, who will be leading us in prayer today. For those of you who have not had the opportunity to meet Dr. Nash over the years, or have read about him, Dr. Nash served nine years with MHDC, two terms in the Kansas City City Council, four years in the US Air Force. He owns a Bachelor's of Science in Economics, a Master's in Economics, MBA in Finance, Masters in Political Science. He has his JD in Law, and he also topped that out with a Doctorate in Education from St. Louis University. He's led humanitarian missions to over seventy countries throughout the world. So let's give him a round of applause as he approaches the dais to give us.
Thank you very much, President Reed, and members of the Board of Aldermen, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. But before I do, I must give all honor and glory to the boss, and that is my nineteen-year-old daughter, who thinks she runs my household, Ariel, who is here. She graduated high school, thank you, just four short months ago, and she's the only one in her class that did not go to college. She did not go to college. You may have seen her in the news, because that is an anomaly today. She chose to be an entrepreneur. And people wonder why I was so thrilled and happy. When she graduated, they saw tears pouring down my face, and they thought, they thought it was because she was graduating. It wasn't. It was because I am looking forward to recouping my investment and getting my money back. I want every penny back. And so, thank you, Ariel, for being here. With that, I would ask that you all bow your heads for the prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you now in prayer, Lord, and we ask that you forgive us of our sins, for we know we have sinned against thee. Lord, we ask that you continue to bless the city of St. Louis, bless its leadership to do your will and not their own, and to work on behalf of the people to make St. Louis, and indeed, the community, the nation, and the world, a better place. It's in Jesus' mighty name we ask these things of you, and in all God's glory and joy, we say, amen.
Let's give Dr. Nash a round of applause, and his daughter, all luck in the world. All right. With that introduction, a round of applause. Any introductions, round of applause? Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. My honored guest today will be Mrs. Joyce Roberts, who is the resident of the twenty-sixth ward.
Welcome, Ms. Roberts. Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guests this morning Kevin Haynes and Jeff Hans, who is also a neighbor from St. Louis, Kansas City Carpenter's Regional Council. Thank you.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to have as my honored guest and my neighbor, Mr. John Doggett. Also over there, we've got Don, and the members of the Community Mediation Group that are here today.
Alderman from twelve.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have today as my honored guests Chris Pickle from AT&amp;T, Lou Hamilton, John McLaughlin, who's back to work a couple days a week, I understand, and Miles, Mr. Miles from the liquor office. I'd also like to introduce former reporter, used to be down here years ago, Mark Slinkman. So, thank you.
Any further introductions? Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I have my friend and former constituents, Joanne Williams, formerly of the Carpenters, and I have, where is Mary Wheeler? There she is, formerly the Democratic Director of St. Louis Board of Elections. And then I have a stalker over there. His name is Chris Carter, Sr., and he is the seventy-sixth District, what is it, you're seventy-sixth, not Senator, but State Rep-Elect, and he's my stalker. He thinks I'm his personal representative and his secretary. So between him and the Alderman from the fourth, I have no time for my constituents, because I have to answer to them.
Well, welcome, welcome, Representative. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap up? Oh, Alderwoman from the first, you have another?
I don't know if anybody introduced Jamal Rogers, who is the former head of the OBS, and one of my female mentors.
See, we also have Craig Smear with us today. Welcome. Any further introductions? Any further inductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap up?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we're gathered here on September twenty-eighth, on this day in nineteen sixty-eight, a wonderful TV program called Sixteen Minutes premiered. It might be noted, it took the Alderman from the twenty-third two hours to watch it that night. But more importantly, this is a celebration. Today is National Drink Beer Day, so you all know where I work. I expect to see you tonight. Thank you very much.
All right. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the September seventh and fourteenth minutes.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report to city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in Alderman's mailbox.
We dispense with line items seven and eight. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items nine through twelve, second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of the Neighborhood and Development Committee. Board Bill Twenty, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-four fifty-two Oregon. Board Bill Twenty-two, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-four twenty-nine, thirty-four thirty-one Ohio. Board Bill Twenty-three, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-five twenty Wisconsin. Board Bill Thirty-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Martin, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for five-three-two Bates. Board Bill Thirty-four, sponsored by Alderwoman Murphy, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the five-zero-one-nine, five-zero-three-two, and five-zero-three-four Ulena. Board Bill Thirty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for fifty-seven eighty McPherson. Board Bill Thirty-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Martin, and ordinance approving a redevelopment, redevelopment plan for seventy-four zero-one Vermont. Board Bill Forty, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for sixty-four fifty-two Nashville and sixty-four fifty-three Wade. Board Bill Seventy-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-four thirty-seven through thirty-nine Iowa. Board Bill Eighty, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-two eleven Osage. Board Bill Eighty-One, sponsored by Alderwoman Martin, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for seventy-seven fourteen through eighteen South Broadway. Board Bill Eighty-Two, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-eight twenty-nine Iowa. Board Bill Eighty-Four, sponsored by Alderman Koltar, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-two thirty-five McNair. Board Bill Ninety-Four, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for fourteen twenty through twenty-two Union. Board Bill Ninety-Five, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for forty-two thirteen Maryland. Board Bill One Thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-two zero-one Morgan Ford. Board Bill One Fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for four-zero-eight through ten North Sarah. Board Bill One Eighteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-five twenty through twenty-two Arkansas. The following bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee. Board Bill Ninety-Eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, authorizing a third amendment to Section One of the Airport Schedule F, CIP Project Ordinance, six-seven-three-five-seven, approved December nineteenth, twenty-two thousand and six, as amended by ordinance six-eight-six-five-zero, approved June second, two thousand and ten, and ordinance six-eight-eight-five-two, approved February the fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, which authorized a multi-year public work and improvement program at St. Louis Lambert International Airport and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill One Zero Two, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to accept and execute a certain airport aid agreement offered by Missouri Highways and Transportation Committee for marketing and promotion of air service at the airport for a maximum obligation of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the reimbursement of direct costs associated with the projects funded under the grant agreement and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill One Zero Four, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance enlarging the boundaries of the Port Authority of the City of St. Louis Port District subject to the approval of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and authorizing certain actions and connections therewith. The following board bill was reported out the HUDs Committee. Board Bill Eighty-Five, sponsored by Alderman Koltar, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for seven-zero-five through seven-one-nine North Second Street. The following board bill was reported out the Street Committee. Board Bill One Twelve, sponsored by Alderman Koltar and ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Missouri and Ann, regulating traffic traveling southbound on Missouri at Ann, regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Ann at Missouri, and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading of board bills.
We dispense with line item fourteen. Perfection consent.
Board Bill One Oh Five, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and President Reed, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to submit all necessary applications to enter into agreement with the Missouri Foundation for Health for participating, participation in a project to develop a criminal justice coordinating council to advance social justice and reforming tree, pre-trial bail to reduce the jail population, and authorizing the mayor upon approval of the Board of Estiment and Apportionment to expend any funds received by said grant to fulfill the obligations of the grant and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill One Ten, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and Alderman Odenberg, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment authorizing the issuance and delivery of not exceed fifty million dollars principal amount of general obligation bond, Series Twenty-eighteen, for the purposes of paying the cost of the project and cost of issuance of such bonds, all for the general welfare, safety, and benefit of the citizens, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize.
Mr. President, I want to move Board Bill One Oh Five. Should I do it, make the motion at this point?
Yes, yes.
I move that we place Board Bill One Oh Five on the third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, that we suspend our rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill One Oh Five to the third reading consent calendar. It's been seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Ogilvy. Twenty-two aye votes.
By your vote, it stays in the motion of Alderman from the eighteenth, and move Board Bill One Oh Five to the third reading consent calendar. We dispense with line items sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bill Seventy-three, as amended. Board Bill One Hundred. Board Bill Ninety-One. Floor sub. And Board Bill One Zero Five.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Ogilvy. Twenty-two aye votes.
By your vote, it stays in the motion of Alderman from the eighteenth, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
Board Bill Seventy-three. Oh, I'm sorry, we have none.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill Seventy-three, as amended. Board Bill One Hundred. Board Bill Ninety-One, floor substitute, and Board Bill One Zero Five.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end
That is the extent of third reading consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry, the report of enrollment.
That's okay. All right. Courtesy resolutions. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the motion for the third courtesy resolution count.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to move to adopt our courtesy resolution consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Thank you.
First reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Second reading.
Resolution Eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Martin, US Durham Milling Enterprise Zone. Board, I'm sorry, Resolution Nine, sponsored by Alderman.
Hold on, one more time. Alderman from the, Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the second reading of resolution number eight.
Yes, Mr. President. In the absence of the Alderwoman from the eleventh, I rise to move that we pass resolution number eight.
Been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Resolution Nine, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, Enterprise Zone for St. Louis Properties, Inc.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the second reading of resolution number nine.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt and finally pass resolution number nine.
It's moved by Alderman from the tenth, and the second on the second, and by Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Resolution Thirty-eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Martin, Enterprise Zone for IPX Apex LLC.
Alderman from the, Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the second reading of resolution number thirty-eight.
Again, because the Alderwoman from the eleventh is not present today, I rise in her absence to move that we pass resolution number thirty-eight.
Moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Resolution Seventy-nine, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, Enterprise Zone for Beara Specialty Contractors, Inc.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the second reading of resolution number seventy-nine.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we continue the Joe Tag Team match here.
Groundhog.
I move that we adopt and finally pass resolution seventy-nine.
It's been moved by Alderman from the tenth, and the second on the motion, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Resolution One Zero One, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Enterprise Zone for Union Electric Company, Enterprise Zone for forty-three zero-one Rier, forty-three twenty-one, and forty-four twenty-seven Geraldine.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the second reading of resolution number one oh one.
Yes, Mr. President. At the request of the Alderman from the twenty-second, I'd like to put resolution number one oh one on the informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place resolution one oh one on the resolution's informal calendar.
So noted. Resolution One Zero Three, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, Enterprise Zone for forty-one fifty-six Manchester Investors LLC.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the second reading of resolution one oh three.
Yes, Mr. President. I rise to move for the passage of resolution one oh three.
Moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, and the second on the motion, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That is the extent of second reading of resolutions.
Miss Lanis, unfinished business.
We have none.
Wednesday, October third, HUDs meeting, nine AM in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday, October third, Health and Human Services, ten AM in the leisure room. Wednesday, October third, six-thirty PM, Transportation and Commerce meeting in the Kennedy Room. And Friday, October fifth, full board meeting, ten AM in the chambers.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Range Folk Festival is being held in Crownlet Park this weekend. It starts this afternoon, goes till seven, and then it's all day Saturday and all day Sunday. And as the name implies, it's strange. They have all sorts of arts and crafts and food trucks and things like that. So come down to Crownlet Park. It's in combination of Eleventh and Thirteenth Ward. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Any further, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would just like, like to announce that I want to thank all the people up in the gallery who comes down on Fridays to see what happens down at the Board of Aldermen, and hopefully, you know, gets a little more educated and understanding on things that go on down there. So I just want to take a minute and recognize them.
All right, excellent. Let's give them a round of applause for coming out. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to give us some additional information for Tuesday, six-thirty PM here at City Hall, Board Bill Number Ninety-three. This is one of three public hearings that will be held around the city of St. Louis to give the public an opportunity to come, get information, and share information. This is a critical bill, and we want to make sure that it is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I did say Tuesday, I meant Wednesday. We have a critical bill before us. We want to make sure that we have opportunities for those who are interested to get firsthand information and make it available in three different areas of the city. Those additional dates, once we get a quorum from the committee, will be published next week. Thank you.
All right. Before we move further, I want to make sure that everyone knows who our new Excise Commissioner is, although he's been there for a little while now, but he's not brand-new. Miles, can you please stand up? This is Miles McDonald, the Excise Commissioner for the city of St. Louis. Let's bring him down. Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this afternoon at noon today in the Rotunda, we will be welcoming the De Prong Gomang monks. They've been exiled from their homeland, and they are here in St. Louis for the first time for their sacred arts tour, and they will be in City Hall. They will be chanting for world peace at noon, and they will be sticking around for about an hour or so in the Rotunda. So I encourage everyone to come down there, especially in light of all the violence that plagues our city. I think it behooves all of us to take some time today and, and be with them to, to chant and to be focused on, on peace in our city and in our world at large. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Tomorrow at eleven o'clock in the forty-two-hundred block of Kennelley, at that Tandy Park, we're re-utilizing, reusing the old billboards that sit around the city. There are sixty-seven billboards in the city, and fourteen of them are in the Fourth Ward. And we're putting historical paintings on these billboards tomorrow at eleven o'clock. And we're also having storytelling about the greater bill and the history of the Annie Malone, Homer Phillips. the Anne Malone, Homer Phillips, places like that, so you all are invited to come out. And Marlene, I can't wait till the 13th so we can whoop of a shine.
Alderman, Alderman from the 4th, remember that. Any further announcements, any, Alderman from the 6th?
Members of the board, I'd like to welcome everyone to attend the Roosevelt High School Homecoming Game, we're going to be tailgating at 11 o'clock on the student parking lot, and then the game starts at 1 o'clock. They're enjoying a three-game winning streak, which has not happened since 2010, and so it's going to be a very exciting game, and I hope to see some of you out there. I have free tickets, so if anybody is interested, hit me up, thanks.
All right, thank you. Any further, any further announcements, any, Alderman from the 19th?
I forgot a couple of things that are really important. So tomorrow, from 10 to 2, Mama Cat will be hosting the homeless in the city for a nice opportunity, have a meal, a good home-cooked meal, and will be passing out toiletries and other things, and if you have a chance, just a 20 minutes or 30 minutes to come by and say hi, bring something that we can use, we're starting the collection of gloves and scarves and things for the winter, we would really appreciate that. The St. Louis American will be having their gala tomorrow, and the president of the Urban League will be one of the honorees. And also, for those, I know we got a lot of SLU alumni here, tomorrow is the bicentennial homecoming, and we'll also be looking at how close we are to meeting that 1 million hours of volunteerism from the students and faculty at SLU for this year. My last thing is, I didn't see her until just a moment ago, but I'd like to recognize Dr. Joyce Roberts. She is a retired educator from St. Louis Public Schools. She won so many awards on a state and national level. If your child went to La Cleet School, your child was overly educated on many, many other platforms other than the basics on the state level, so I just wanted to say thank you for working with our children and dedicating your life to education.
Yeah, thank you, Doctor. Alderman from the 1st?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like, we're in announcements, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to announce that there will be a Pinrose Neighborhood First Ward Meeting Saturday, September 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, and also, I would like to wish, we had it on the consent calendar, Ms. Mary Jenkins will turn 102 years old on Sunday, September 30th, and they're having a birthday party tomorrow, and we did pass a courtesy resolution, I thank you for that, I'd just like to wish her a happy 102nd birthday.
Well, everybody, let's give Ms. Jenkins a big round of applause, 102, wow. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Going once, going twice. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the 11th, 14th, 20th, 22nd, and 23rd be excused for necessary acts.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 12th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, October 5th, 10:00 a.m.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, entertain the second on that, motions, seconded by Alderman from the, from the 25th to 7th, 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th, you get it, Alderman. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. We stand adjourned.